Two thousand eighteen, we're here for another one of our rousing city council meetings. Uh, we'll follow our normal procedure. Um, do we have a preacher in the house?
It's Brad.
We're supposed to have one, huh?
Brad or Matt?
Uh-oh, that's bad, that means I gotta pray. So, uh, if you would, stand, join us in the pledge of allegiance. We will bless this gathering and we'll turn it over to Mr. Ake.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just join me in prayer if you wish. Dear Lord, we, uh, gosh, we just thank you for the ability to meet and to discuss the affairs of, uh, the city of Westfield. We are so very, very blessed here in our city by our partnership with all of our city council. The amount of growth, prosperity that Westfield has enjoyed and help us to help others as we enjoy our prosperity and we need to help those that are less prosperous. And this council has undertaken several different programs to, to help others with our youth assistance program and our, our health clinic, um, our student impact. And dear God, we ask a special blessing on our school system as schools all across the country are dealing with many, many issues of, of those that are in need of mental and emotional counseling. But with your guidance, we can bring our city and our schools and our faith in you and together we can all solve these issues that are plaguing so many of our communities. Thank you, dear God, amen. Mr. Ake, at your meeting, sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, just announce that there are no changes to the agenda tonight. And so, uh, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Cindy Speljerek?
Here.
Joe Edwards?
Here.
Jim Ake?
Here.
Mark King?
Here.
Chuck Lehman?
Here.
Bob Horkey?
Here.
Steve Hoover?
Here.
Have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Um, at this time, I'd like to, uh, ask for approval of the minutes as read. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Joe Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, signify by saying aye if you wish to approve the minutes as stated. Aye. Pose, same sign. Minutes are approved, seven zero. We'll now move into claims. Do I have a motion to approve claims as stated?
So moved.
A motion by Mark Keen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Horkey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask council to approve claims as stated by signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, same sign. Claims are approved. Thank you, council. At this time, it gives me great pleasure, we have one special presentation tonight and I'm excited to have our, our Westfield Shamrock Robotics High School Robotics Club with us tonight. So, welcome to the chamber and, uh, we look forward to your presentation and learning more about what you do and how you wanna connect with our community. Don't be shy, come on. Come on, up front, spread out down here. All right, there you go. We'll cheer for you.
Hi, everyone. We are the Shamrock Robotics, we are a new rookie team in Westfield. Um, in the first community, which is an international community, uh, teams are organized by number. The higher the number, the newer you are. So, teams start from really low numbers such as forty-five. Uh, we are team number sixty-nine fifty-six out of Westfield High School. Um, we're all capitalized, Shamrock Robotics. This is a picture of our team at a competition yesterday at St. Joseph at high school. So, what is First Robotics? It's an international, uh, organization that helps to inspire young people, uh, such as ourselves in the science and technology areas of, uh, sex. So, by knowing all of these leadership and, uh, what would you say? Uh, these new ideas that, that we've learned over these past weeks, um, through the health department or such as Renee and Davey, we get to build our new, uh, our skills to be employed to become the next technicians, the next engineers. Um, as Dean came into one of the founders of, who first said, "To transform our culture by creating a world where science and technology are celebrated, where young people dream of becoming science and technology leaders." So, these are the levels of first that we go through. There's one for each, uh, level through grades you're in. So, K through forty, you get the Lego, the Lego League Junior, four through eight, uh, Lego League, uh, the exact challenge, and we are in First Robotics Competition, so at high school.
So, First Robotics works because it combines two sports, and second is sport, and third is science and technology. It has been described as unique first, we spoke to the line, and some students have called it the hardest level ever had. Those students will start with a lot of education and careers in science, technology, and various So, at the beginning of the season, our year, there's a kickoff, which we did this year in January, we were at Interpretenia. At that time, we're getting a standing game, and the standard is that all teams receive and watch the kickoff animation game, in animation. We've got six weeks to develop a robot for competition from that date, and we will complete, uh, local events and qualify for state and world championships. Is there a work in the different categories of, of, uh, student appreciation or to develop?
To use the animation of what our game is this year, every year we change the game to give them to make a robot, a new robot to go with the game.
Welcome to the two thousand eighteen First Robotics Competition and this year's game, First Power Up. Two alliances of video game characters and of human operators are trapped in an arcade game. To escape, alliances use power cubes to control switches and a scale, pass power cubes through the exchange for power ups, and ascend to face the boss. Teams may preload up to one power cube per robot. Additional power cubes are available in the power cube piles, along the fence nearest the scale, and in each alliance portal. At the start of the match, the plates of the scale and the switches are randomized. During the first fifteen seconds, robots are autonomous. They work to cross their auto line and place power cubes on the switch and the scale. Alliances who successfully own their switch and have three robots cross the auto line will receive one ranking point. During the following two-minute and fifteen-second teleoperative period, human operators remotely control their robots. They continue to gather power cubes to place on the scale and the switches to gain ownership for the longest time, earning points for each second of ownership. Human operators behind the alliance station wall collect power cubes from the exchange. They can deliver them back to the robots through the return or to their vault. In the vault, power cubes may be traded in for three power ups. Alliances choose one in the match to activate each power up to gain a temporary advantage during the match. The force power up gives an alliance ownership of their switch, the scale, or both. The boost power up increases scoring for ten seconds for either their switch, the scale, or both. And near the end of the match, Levitate earns one member of the alliance a free climb. Other alliance members climb from their platform. If all three members successfully climb, the alliance can face the boss and gain an additional ranking point. The alliance that earns the most points wins the match and defeats the boss.
Um, well, I, um, I was a star of the person, my name's Daddy, and I'm the, uh, for the name of the robot, they still call us, um, our two thousand, two thousand eighteen competition robots, um, is that triangle, uh, shaped robot that you see there. Um, we, as mentioned before, we spent six weeks building and going for the robot. We first started off, um, listing out what we wanted, what we thought other people would do to try to make a preemptive attempt to strategize, and we made it. And, um, the picture on the right-hand side is the five robot. After the six weeks, we're five robot to make, so that the league knows that we did a better robot after those six weeks, not giving you the unfair advantage. Thank you, Justin. Was the match that we played this past weekend, um, it was a very fun and eye-opening experience as a first official and creator first. We played as one of the two teams there, and we won the rookie all-star award. Yep. Um, we, we had, after we play match, we go back to the robot and we go, hey, um, we can make this a little bit better, I can change something a little bit here to make our robot better, to make sure that, that we're playing, we're playing our very best, our very hardest. Um, another thing that we did is we made, we made progress with other teams because first isn't only about competition, it's about gracious professionalism and, and being gracious and being a gracious professionalist, you know, we have, we have, we have to show that to the university, to have, to promote more engagement, and to operate nicely in our soul and to build through competition. Okay, so our P U D, cultural projects. So, our cultural projects are basically, uh, jobs that we explore between, um, our members because we have people to share in top. And also, we call them cultural projects because basically it's where we, uh, can kind of, where the team's culture, you know, is. And, um, our cultural projects are outreach, and so we teach our students something, and a business plan, our site, our, uh, inventory, marketing, team spirit, visual media, sponsor and engagement, and awards, and so.
So, we'd like to make a few acknowledgements to a couple of our constituents and sponsors. Thank you to FedEx Freight, you got sponsored by NASA, Dow, Agro Sciences, AgroSC Foundation, um, Rolls-Royce, um, and, uh, score down there such as Andy Mark, um, M S O E, Warner Steel, Martin Chikantikumidiana, Dayjack, these are a lot of, we do a lot of local businesses because we like to get integrated into our community and, uh, create a two-way relationship. Also, to a few other F R C teams, eight sixty-eight is the Carmel, uh, F R C team, and they helped us out a lot by, um, sending us students that are representatives, they're really veteran at this, uh, F R C, and they kind of look over what we do. Um, thirty-six, sorry, three sixty-five, twelve fifty-nine, ten, uh, ten twenty-three. They all have numbers, um, but they also get their D one numbers, um, thirty-four seventy-eight and seventeen twenty. They all helped us out during this, uh, during our rookie build season, guiding us in the right direction. Special thanks to our school and community. Dr. Stacy McGuire is our, uh, principal at Westfield High School, to Dr. Sher Green, who is our superintendent at Westfield High School, Mr. Dan Dyckton, Mr. Randy Cupp, the Westfield Shaver of Commerce, and Westfield City Council.
Um, so, uh, these are a few of our other events. We're having another, um, district event at Main Field High School, um, on March twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, so.
So, uh, these projects, you know, making a robot get a world championship, it's a very actually expensive process, I mean, the robot alone is around twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, we have students who are able to raise up to around eighteen thousand dollars, that was enough to go to the robots, St. Joseph, Plainfield. But, since we got in the rookie all-star order, we get to go to state championships, but we can't exactly afford it yet. So, we're doing our best to raise money and we're gonna get all the way up to world championships, so we need to get really working on our fundraising. So, if you guys wanna support us, at the cradle. Follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube, yeah, we have a YouTube channel. We also have a diamond donate night at Boom Buzz, uh, March twentieth, April tenth, and April twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much for joining us and sharing that information with us.
Yeah, that was great, you know, this group, uh, several of them came in to me a couple months ago and started talking about the robots that they make, and I'm like, "We make robots at our high school," and, uh, it was just, uh, it was really phenomenal to see what these young kids are doing, uh, and competing across the state, bringing home, uh, your first roo- rookie award, congratulations, that's, that's really cool. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, uh, back to the agenda. We'll move into old business. We have ordinance eighteen oh one that was introduced to council January eighth and has had, uh, been through the APC process and is up for adoption consideration. This is Pam Howard presenting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for adoption consideration, have an amendment to the Oak Ridge Point P U D District to accommodate a new bank. This one point four or five acre site is located at the southwest corner of State Road Thirty-two and Oak Ridge Road and is zoned the Oak Ridge Point P U D, which was adopted in two thousand eight. The proposed amendment redu- removes the minimum tract and lot frontage requirements for development plans as well as adjusts some of the landscaping and design requirements for the site. This item received a public hearing on February fifth and comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. I do have several members of the, the development team here, while they do not plan to present, they are available for questions, as am I if you have any of staff. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioners? This time I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance eighteen oh one, Oak Ridge Point P U D District Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horkey. Hearing none, will the clerk please call, like, poll the council?
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Speljerek?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Question carries, seven zero.
All right, thank you. The second item under old business is ordinance eighteen oh two, Compton P U D. Caleb is pres- oh, Kevin is presenting tonight, thank you. Uh, council introduction was held January eighth, we went through the APC process and again, it's before us for adoption tonight.
All right, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. For the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is a new planning or plan unit development called the Compton P U D. The proposed ordinance would allow for the construction of a new office building on the property, um, located at one hundred fifty-sixth Street and Spring Mill Road. Since the project was introduced, there were a handful of modifications to the ordinance, um, really highlighted by, um, limiting the allowable uses to only office uses and some modifications to the building elevations to, um, make it more residential in appearance on the Spring Mill Road side of the building, uh, and a handful of other smaller, smaller items. Uh, the project did receive a public hearing at the February fifth Plan Commission meeting and received a favorable recommendation at the March fifth Plan Commission meeting and is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. The petitioner, um, is here this evening but is not planning on making a presentation but is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for either Kevin or the petitioner at this time? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion, please.
I've moved to approve ordinance eighteen dash oh two.
Okay. I have a motion, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, I have a second by Mr. Hoover. Is there any discussion among council members?
Not so much discussion, but the outcome from APC, while it was a favorable recommendation, it was not unanimous, it was five two. I wrestled throughout this with expanding business uses on the corner and found that problematic, which is why I was one of those two votes.
Thank you.
Seems like it's too much of a growth and while it's a residential character building, substantially large in what's there, so.
I've grappled with this one too, and similar to, to Mr. Horkey's comments, this, this is to me quite a bit to put on this parcel, and while I think that overall the building would be an improvement compared to what's there, expanding this business and its location concerns me for the residential area, they, they are sensitive to that and so mu- so, this has not been an easy one, but I will be voting Mr. Horkey.
Thank you. Any other comments, council?
I had some, some heart concerns, but I decided, uh, that this was good for that corner, uh, and the main reason is that there were no objections from neighbors, and that is rare. Uh, and I guess, my guess is they consider this a improvement to the corner, the building that's there currently, uh, an old home, uh, somewhat rundown in nature, and, uh, this will be a, a big addition to, uh, a nice addition, I think, to the neighborhood and to the, to our thoroughfare. And that's really the reason, had there been a, a strong or even a mild public objection to this, I probably would not have gone along with this because it is out, somewhat out of character for the area as a use. I think as a building, it fits, uh, but the use, um, part of the process through the APC was severely limiting, um, significantly limiting the uses, it could be in here only office, professional office type uses, and there were some limitations on hours, trash pickup, th- those types of things that would be of, um, concern perhaps to the neighbors, so I will support it for that reason.
I, I have a comment, I, I too was somewhat hesitant to, when they introduced this and watched it go through, and I think due to the architecture that is very residential looking and a limited use, that, uh, I, I think it's a good fit for their, um, I think it'll blend well with the neighborhood and again, the neighbors didn't object and, so I think it'll be a good, good addition.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
No.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
No.
Cindy Speljerek?
No.
Mark Keen? Question carries.
Thank you. And I have that four to three, is that correct?
Right.
Thank you. All right, uh, ordinance eighteen oh five, Hall and House P U D District Amendment. It was introduced to council February twelfth and it is also up for adoption tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council again for the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. This item before you is an amendment to the Hall and House Planning Unit Development on the south side of Wheeler Road, specifically, this is for parcel B two, which is immediately west of the Hampton Inn property. The proposal would modify the front yard setback and some of the landscaping standards specific to the development of this parcel in order to accommodate a six thousand square foot restaurant. Um, Grindstone Charlie's has gone through our development plan review process to go on this site. This item was introduced at the February twelfth city council meeting as mentioned and remains unchanged since that time. It received a public hearing at the March fifth Plan Commission meeting, um, and then was forwarded to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation at that same meeting. Uh, the petitioner is here and is available to answer questions this evening, but again, is not planning to make a presentation, so I'm available for any questions that you may have of staff or we can ask the petitioner to come up. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Any questions for petitioner or Kevin at this time? I entertain a motion.
Move that we approve ordinance eighteen oh five, the Hall and House P U D District Amendment.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Horkey, a second by Mr. Edwards. Any further discussion from council members? All right, hearing none, Kim, please call the rule.
Cindy Speljerek?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Question carries, seven zero.
All right, thank you. Next item up on the, uh, and last item under old biz- uh, old business is Resolution eighteen dash one hundred. We'll wait for the room to clear in just a second here. Uh, we had a council introduction on January eighth and, uh, since then, we have had some ongoing discussions with the Main Street Productions. Brian, you wanna give some background on the ordn- or the, uh, resolution?
Certainly can. This was before you back in January, and I think Dr. Keen made a motion. Uh, we'll be looking for a similar motion tonight and that would be authority to enter into this license agreement with the Westfield Playhouse. What they are planning, and they operate under Main Street Productions, what they are requesting is the opportunity to occupy a piece of property that we own just outside the parking lot here so that they can erect and maintain a playhouse and put on public plays over a period of time. Uh, since January until as late as last week, I believe, Jim, we've been going back and forth on some issues with the primary issues being that we want to maintain ownership of the property, and after a period of fifteen years, we can take control of not only the property but the building upon it as well. Uh, they'll of course have to go through zoning, get a proper zoning, uh, in place before the construction of the building. We have the ability to influence, if not approve.
We have the ability to influence, if not approve, the architectural standards and the look of the building before it goes up. They're fully insured, they're going to be taking over all the, all the responsibilities of the property, including maintenance, all the utilities, whatnot. The only cost to the city would be the lack of use of the property during the period of time this building's on it.
I would just like to add that this process started some time ago and they approached myself and about the possibility of finding a location downtown. They're currently located out on thirty-two in a building without toilets. It would be very nice inside plumbing. It'd be very nice to have them downtown. They felt with the growth of the community and trying to create pedestrian traffic in downtown Westfield and some excitement, it would be nice if they could find a way to move down here. So that triggered some negotiation back and forth and hence we came up with the license agreement that is in place for fifteen years and can be renewed after that. So with that having been said, it's up for adoption consideration. Could be up for adoption consideration tonight.
I once again move to approve Resolution eighteen dash one hundred.
All right, I have a motion by Dr. Mark Keen. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Bob Horkey. Any further discussion?
I hope this can move forward and that they get their building. I think it'd be great to have, it's good for the arts, good for our downtown. I think it would be good for them as well, being more centralized in Westfield and not out in the, on the west side, so I hope that everything moves forward as planned.
I'm very excited to have this downtown, coming downtown as well. I think it adds excitement and adds to the ambiance as we grow our downtown and create a special place here. I think it's just a fine addition or will be. Okay, will I call the rule?
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spelljerrick?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sampson, for bringing this to us. You and I'll have to meet to sign the agreement shortly. Thank you. All right. That concludes our Old Business and we'll move into New Business tonight. And we have before us Resolution eighteen one oh one. This will be a council introduction tonight and Brian, are you presenting this? Todd? This is.
Now that we got that work done so smoothly.
This is reestablishing our cum cap fund, which we do every year.
Yes, sir, set at five percent.
Well, I'm excited.
Yes, sir, this is our annual reestablishment of the cum cap fund. It's going to be set at five percent, it'll go down to the state to be negotiated, but this is a standard process we do annually to make sure we can take that at least some sense on our AV towards cumulative capital fund.
Well, that was pretty short, thank you. Any questions?
This is the two million dollar rolling block then that's been going around for purchase of police cars and. Five percent. But it's five percent of a assessed valuation, so.
Doesn't always say that though.
No, we set it at five.
We send it down and they could cut it. Okay.
But it's an extension of what we've already done.
Yes, we've been doing it for quite a while. Couple decades.
Okay, I, I entertain a motion.
Are you, I think this goes to public hearing in April.
Oh, that's right, this is just an introduction tonight. It is up for adoption consideration, I'm sorry, council. It'll go for public hearing April ninth and then up for adoption April ninth. So thank you, that, that concludes that matter for the night. Resolution eighteen one oh two, authorizing the transfer of interest in real and personal property from the city of Westfield to the Westfield Redevelopment Authority. Mr. Zager, this is the council introduction tonight.
It's ripe for consideration. It's a resolution. You may, you may remember seeing something like this within the last six months. This particular financing is to take out the bands, which were taken by the city in two thousand and thirteen. They're, they're available for five years and then they have to turn into permanent financing. That financing is set to close on the fifteenth of this month. Now, we previously took out some bands and adopted a resolution very similar to this, if not identical, but given the fact that that was a different financing, Jim Crawford asked that you adopt this resolution so that it encompasses any property that may have been acquired by the city from the time the last resolution was adopted until this resolution's adopted, so that the transcript can be complete and up to date. The only pieces of property that may have been included or may be included in this one, which wasn't included in the last resolution, would have been the Heim's property, which closed on a different period of time. It's on the south part of Grand Park. It was locked up in a bankruptcy and then, or an estate, then a bankruptcy and then a foreclosure before we acquired it. And so it was out of sync with the acquisition of the rest of the property at Grand Park. The second one would have to do with some of the personal property within the event center. We want a resolution that would encompass everything that's there. This would not, this would transfer ownership of that to the Redevelopment Authority, which you know is now leasing all those things to the Redevelopment Commission.
Question?
Sir?
I thought we had an agreement that the Redevelopment Authority would not borrow money without the specific consent of the city council. It looks like that's what they're doing here.
That's already been done, this is just the authority for the transfer of the property.
Why, why did that happen then?
Well, the bands were taken out in two thousand and thirteen. Those bands have to be reduced to permanent financing.
But there's no set dollar amount in here or anything.
This isn't the financing, this is merely transferring ownership of property, both personal and real, into the Redevelopment Authority basically as.
But that's their security.
Yes.
Well, why, why aren't we not told what the dollar amount of this is going to be?
The, the dollar amount's already been set, the financing's been done on a different timetable. This is just a resolution to put the title of all the property out there into the Redevelopment Authority's name.
Well, let me read you what it says. Whereas the Westfield Redevelopment Authority has approved the issuance of its local tax lease rental revenue bonds.
Yes.
So that is a, there, we're doing a first grab on local option tax basically with that.
That's been done.
That's the financing. But how much money is it and when was it done?
It was done the last couple of months, Joe. You don't, it happened right here. This resolution is only fin- this resolution is merely transferring title of property.
I understand that, that's this paragraph.
Yes, he's identifying what financing.
But it says financing, refinancing of certain facilities in Grand Park Sports Campus, considering parking lots and roads, synthetic turf fields and equipment, natural grass baseball fields, perimeter fencing, lighting, site finishing, restroom concessions and so forth. That covers a wide area of stuff.
Yes. And all of that has to be under the, under the title of one entity.
Well, this, did this come before the city council? That's my question. Did this issue come before the city council?
Yes.
When?
I couldn't tell you the date right now. The financing has gone through, we're at the closing now.
Finance committee of.
What would have happened is that the process would come through here.
I, I want to go back to the finance committee, who is the finance committee?
I, we have no committees in Westfield.
But you just told me the finance committee went through this.
No, no, we went through this. We, as in the city council, the redevelopment authority.
Perhaps you can help my memory a little bit sometime on this.
Sure.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold on this kind of business. If you go to Carmel, Fishers, Noblesville, the redevelopment commissions and redevelopment authorities bring reports to the city councils about what they contemplate doing and then they get their consent to do so.
The consent did run through the council.
Well, I'd like to see something on that, if I might. I'll not argue about it in front of you here, but I'd sure like to see it.
Help any of I, these are in the warehouses. The resolution, what's being resolved begins here in this language.
Okay.
This is just kind of the preamble, setting the table for us.
But when I, when I. When I see the authority has approved the issuance of local bonds, my ears go up, I guess. I don't apologize for that at all.
They did approve them, but it was with our authorization. I mean, we voted in this.
We authorized that.
Well, the next meeting you can bring me the paper and show me how that happened.
It'll probably have your signature on it, the.
Well, I, that would, that would make my, make me feel a lot better then.
I may find it before the end of the meeting for you, but, but right now, keep in mind that this doesn't authorize any additional funds to be encumbered or spent.
But even refinancing has its dangers at times.
This isn't a refinancing. The bands are bond anticipation notes, which allows us.
But it's still debt.
But we said it, those have a timeframe set where we have to then have a subsequent action. This is that subsequent action.
The bands are taken out.
The bands have to be converted over a certain period of time into permanent.
Just like refinancing your car and refinancing your house.
Not really, not really. This isn't, I'm absolutely sure. What, what happens on bond anticipation notes is that an entity, a school, library or city or town can take out a loan and through the bond anticipation note process, you pay a little higher percentage rate and you're basically an uncollateralized loan that's available to be carried for up to five years, at which time it has to be reduced to a permanent financing or paid off. So, and that is usually done at the end of the five years at a, in this case, a much better interest rate.
Well, I'd like to see it. If you'll excuse me, I.
No, absolutely, I'm pretty sure I can find it.
Right. Mr. President, this has been through us. Not, I'm not going to say several times, but it's, I mean, we acted on this. The, the Redevelopment Commission is the vehicle we use to get this process done months and months ago, and this is only just one more step in that process, Joe.
But they do that with our consent.
Absolutely, that's exactly correct and we consented that. I think you're going to find your.
That's what I'm missing.
Signature on that.
Perhaps I was asleep at that meeting, do you suppose? Okay.
They also hold their meetings here, the Redevelopment Commission does.
Understand.
I've, I've participated on it and in the past, I've attended those meetings, we watch what they do and they do nothing with financing without our approval. That's, that's put distinctly in the agreements that they cannot do, can't do any borrowing or incumbents without our approval.
Okay, to, to that subject, when we passed a resolution last fall about liquidity, debt management, reserves and that sort of thing, the Director of Enterprise Development, not whoever that is, was to give to the city council every quarter a report on that. We have not, we have received one report since then.
Joe, we're closing the books, the third, the first quarter hasn't closed this year. They just got last year's closed and we will have that very shortly.
Well, I, I wait with eager, with eager anticipation.
You can get current status in open gov as well, but that is on, that is on, the first quarter will be done here and, and when they close the books on that, we'll have a presentation. All right, any other comments or any other discussion? Okay, this is up for adoption consideration. Will clerk please call the rule?
Do you want a motion first?
Need a motion.
Oh, we, okay, I thought we had one, okay, that's right. We need a motion. Would somebody care to make a motion, please?
I'll move that we approve Resolution eighteen oh two, which is authorizing the transfer of interest in real and personal property from the city of Westfield to the Westfield Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you, Bob, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Bob Horkey, a second by Mr. Steve Hoover. All right. Would you please call the rule?
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
abstain.
Cindy Spelljerrick?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero, or six one.
Okay. All right. Next order of business is ordinance eighteen zero six, Riverfront District. Mr. Skelton is presenting.
One second, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Before you this evening is ordinance number eighteen oh six. It's an ordinance establishing a municipal riverfront development project area under Indiana Code seven point one dash three dash twenty dash sixteen. The purpose of establishing this project area is to really complement the and support Westfield's economic development initiative by providing new restaurants with access to additional alcoholic beverage licenses. The, this, this is only the case within certain portions of the existing Grand Junction Economic Development Area. The area that is the subject of this ordinance is identified on the overhead projector. This is Exhibit B in your materials. This area is all area located, this is just a portion of the existing Grand Junction Economic Development Area. The ordinance is proposed for adoption consideration this evening and I've received a couple of questions about this and I just thought I'd summarize some of the things that this ordinance is not. And if anybody has questions, please feel free. But this ordinance does, does not obligate the city to grant any additional licenses. As a matter of fact, the city doesn't issue the licenses, the normal alcohol local board does, which is in, in Hamilton County, they meet monthly. This merely sets a, an opportunity for the city to have influence over, unlike a normal license, the city actually has influence over who receives these licenses. And specifically, they, applicants would submit an application to the local jurisdiction, receive a review from a committee that you would establish in a subsequent meeting. The, the petitioner, the applicant would offer up commitments that would run with the operation of whatever their facility is and if they fail to perform in any way with those commitments, then that's grounds for revocation of their license. And so that's, that's not, we don't have that opportunity in a normal situation with normal liquor licenses. This, this is a, this is not zoning. This has nothing to do with zoning. This is a, this is a separate area that is established just under the statute that I mentioned for the purpose of alcoholic beverage permits with the state of Indiana. This does not dictate any land uses, it doesn't change any zoning rules, it doesn't grant any permits. The only thing that it does is it preserves the city's ability to have access to additional licenses if it determines that it, it needs them or wants them. And so, and just to put things into perspective, the, the type of permit that we're talking about is exactly, it's really about the same type of permit that was awarded to the city when, a couple of years ago, when the state legislature when, a couple of years ago, when the state legislature awarded four additional licenses. I think we asked for ten. We were given four, and, and they're pretty much gone. I think we have one that's not spoken for. If we wait for the normal decennial census quota system to work, we would only have that one full license until probably twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two. And we're, we're having more restaurants than that come approach us about locating here than that per year. It's really multiples per year, so. With that, I will, I'm happy, you probably have questions, and I'm happy to try to respond. And I, Mindy Westrick with Fager Baker Daniels is with me this evening, and if you get too technical, I may have to rely on Mindy.
All right. One of the considerations of this is we have an opportunity now, and the reason this is before us now is also because the legislature's contemplating a change. And so the opportunity is, the timing has to do with that opportunity. We are hospitality city. We have a lot of guests. They spend money here. They need to eat here. We collect food and beverage tax, so there's some advantages to taking a look at this opportunity we've been given here. So, does council have any comments for the petitioners or have legal counsel or Matt?
Well, I, I just like to ask a que, I just want to make sure, and this probably matter, I don't know if the attorney, other, other attorney, but I just want to make sure that we still maintain some control over what type of business or what type of restaurant would, would go into any kind of commercial development that we approve when they, when they come before us or come before the APC. I just want to ensure that this is not something that we have no control over.
And, and actually, you have multiple levels of control. This would, I mean, all the normal land use rules still apply. I mean, if there's a zoning, zoning necessary in order to do, it would still go before the plan commission, would still have a public hearing, would still have to be approved by the City Council. But in addition to that, there's another level of review specific to the license itself, not the use. It's hard, I mean, it's hard to get your brain around it, but one is a license to dispense, and the other one has to do with land use. They're kind of related, but they're not the same. So it's, there's actually two layers, and the, the second layer actually is probably more stringent. If you look at the, the attachments to the ordinance, some of the questions in the application actually pertain to what your menu is. I mean, if there's a drastic change to your menu, to your hours of operation, the kind of dining experience that you're providing, I mean, these are not transferable permits. So you, you can't, they don't become property that you go and just sell this, and you don't know what you're going to end up with. You're, you're approving the applicant.
So these restaurants probably wouldn't come without a, without a license.
That's, that's, that's what we're finding, yes.
They will go elsewhere.
But this council will retain the ability to structure this committee how it feels necessary. That's not written into the law. We can do that as we see fit.
Yeah, you, you would have, you have that ability. We, we would come before, if, if this passes, it'll be on either your next meeting or a subsequent meeting shortly after. But you established the committee. The economic development permits, I think, there was just a three-member group, and it was, the council had an appointment, mayor had an appointment, and then just by default, because it's an economic development permit, my position is one of those. Doesn't have to be that way. Can be the same group. It can be a different group. It can be a larger group.
Can I clarify one thing that, that happened to be in here that seemed to get a lot of people? We had to put a lot of whereas's in there to satisfy the state-
Yeah.
-in terms of doing this, and, and so I think it led a lot of people to believe it was more than what it really is. And there was talk about how much city and state investments had been or would be. There was nothing new. There's no approved, you know, spending with this. This has nothing to do with, with that kind of thing. That was to point out that the city and the state have both invested money in this area. And, you know, the bridge going over thirty-two for the Monon, you know, State Road thirty-two widening, those projects coming up, regional detention, there's all these different things that have gone in to both the city and state putting in the investment in the area. So I didn't want people to think that was additional because it's not. Those are things that were already planned or had already been done.
You're correct.
Thank you, Cindy. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out a couple of things as well. I think that in respect to Dr. Keen's question, which is a good one, I think this actually gives us far more control than we ever had before. Because once this, if a license is granted, it does not pass on. So we have total control there, which gives us another level of com, comfort. Also, Matt, I might understand that this has not passed the Indiana Legislature as of yet. Is that correct?
So, thanks for asking. The, the Indiana Legislature is, this, the bill, that, there is a bill under consideration now that would purport to, to change our ability to, to do this. That's why this is coming before you now and not a month from now. There's, there's many people, I think, in the state legislature that have become dissatisfied with the existing laws as it relates to the quota system today and the way that communities, especially growing communities like Westfield, and we're unique. The people that we are hosting here aren't, don't all live in our census tracts, okay? I mean, that's not normal for Indiana. So, growing communities like Westfield and some other metropolitan areas have struggled because if you wait for a decennial census, I mean, you're always ten years behind in trying to provide, you know, places for the people that you host to dine and recreate. So, the state legislature is, is taking measures to, to rein in these exceptions, to almost force an overhaul of the, of the liquor laws, the license laws in Indiana. And this piece right here is, is at risk of going away. And so it has not been signed into law, and we do not know an effective date, but it could be as early as Wednesday.
But again, so the answer is no, right?
Correct.
Have not passed the law yet, right?
Correct.
That's right, and-
If we, and if we don't do this, okay, then we'll lose our opportunity.
We could.
But-
Possibly. It has not passed a change. But here's the, what's important to Westfield, and Matt touched on it. We're not your normal city where we need, we have twenty restaurants based on our population. We have two million visits to Grand Park a year where people from out of here are wanting to dine, and then they go home. We can't count them.
They're going to eat somewhere, aren't they, Mayor?
What?
They're going to eat somewhere, aren't they?
They're going to eat. And if they don't eat in Westfield, they're going to eat in Carmel, or they're going to eat in Noblesville. We, the reason we created this whole Grand Park was to create the industry of hospitality. Now, the legislature may be changing some of this, and we merely want to be sure we can take advantage of the existing law as it is today. It was created for this very purpose. The riverfront, it's called the riverfront, right? Do we have a river? Yeah, we do. By this definition, that little creek that runs through the middle of the town is a river. You know, I've always wanted a raging river. I've talked to all of you. Well, we have it. But it was designed because a lot of, of tourist communities are on bodies of water. Okay? Well, Matt figured out, we're on a body of water, and we're in the tourism business, so we need to take advantage of this, wisely so.
I think there's-
That's why we want to also ask you to adopt it tonight. I don't know what the legislature's going to do this week.
I do think this does one other thing for us, too.
Finishing my three minutes.
Sorry, start over.
I, I think that we not only are not reacting or we're not acting out of order, we're perfectly in order to do this tonight, but that doesn't mean that it's going to be passed. So I would encourage us further to contact our reps to give them our opinion that we would actually like them to pass it.
I, I just want to make one other, one other point, too. I think that the cost that's associated with these licenses is a little bit different than these, some of the other licenses, and I think it would give it an opportunity for local, perhaps some local restaurants to start as opposed to national chains coming in because there is more affordability for something like this. And I certainly would like to see local people have a chance to, to do some successful things, too, as opposed to just looking at national chains.
And my comment, my last comment is food and beverage tax comes back to us. It helps everybody, so. Just want to make that point as well. So at this point, is there any further discussion? Now, the first action we have to take in order to adopt this tonight is to suspend the rules. So I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules tonight.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. Sorry. Mr. President, I'll make a motion that, with reference to ordinance eighteen oh six, I'd like to suspend the rules so we can take action on this to, this evening.
All right, thank you.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Hoover. All right. So the first act is to suspend the rules. I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Speljeric?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
So now, we have the suspension of the rules, and I'd ask for an, a, I'd ask for a motion to approve ordinance eighteen oh six.
So moved?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Bob Horkey, a second by Joe Edwards. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll, please?
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Speljeric?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
And Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, councilors. The, the next item, thank you, Mayor, the next item on the agenda for consideration, ordinance eighteen dash oh seven, right-of-way signs, and this is a council introduction tonight. And, Mr. Lehman, you have all the time you need.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance came to us recently from the county, actually. The county has already passed a similar ordinance dealing with the outline areas outside of our city limits, and it appears that the other communities are passing a similar ordinance, so that's the simple explanation. This does begin the, the dialogue will entertain some input, but it, you can read it, says pretty much what it says. It's to simply rid our local area of, of overabundance of signage on our public right-of-ways. That's it.
Any comments?
I have a few. I just want to say, I, I had an initial concern with the timing of this because I've been a candidate before, and I know that we have people campaigning now for a primary. And one of my first concerns that I had was these people have probably made a sizable investment on their campaigns into signage and probably contemplating being able to blanket the right-of-ways, as has been done in all previous years here. So I was concerned for those candidates. However, I have not heard any current candidates complain whatsoever. And I'll say this, I loathe the signs. I loathe them. In fact, I was thinking, if I'm run again, if, that I would try and do it without putting up any signs. I mean, I hate them that much, and I don't see where they're actually helpful. In any case, I think it's a fantastic idea. I do have some concerns with the ordinance. I might want to sit with staff on. I think that we have a few instances in our city that are, that are a little different than the county. We have in cases, certain parcels that are coming right up to pavement for their, so there's no right-of-way really to consider, and it's hard to tell where some of that is. And I think you've tried to accommodate that, but I think there are a few more things to look at.
So this would mean all campaign signs would not be on public right-of-way, then?
That's correct, but the resolution reads no signs.
Well, what would happen if some should appear?
You can read the resolutions. You can read the ordinance.
There, there's things that say like, there may be, I mean, it's a Class C infarction, I believe, and fraction, sorry, infarction. Brain infarct, I think. But it's up to five hundred dollars per sign that can be fined. And one of my concerns, too, was that if campaign got ugly, somebody could potentially get signs created for their opposing person and put them up, blanket the right-of-way, and create a real, real problem. So I think we need to address that thinking. We don't like to think it could happen, but-
Yeah, the, the thing that the council may want to consider if it is, chooses to make modifications to its ordinance proposal is, is you've got a county ordinance that applies today. I mean, it's in effect. It applies to all rights-of-way in our township, outside of the corporate limits. To the extent that we create any inconsistencies between our, your ordinance and the county's ordinance, it could give rise to some confusion out in the field. So it's just something to keep aware of.
And in, in short, we want to be as close to other municipalities in the county. Everybody is adopting some sort of legislation based on the county. I had some conversations because there are concerns about certain signs. For example, real estate signs. They may be looking at some, some different language there, and this is just an introduction. So we'll get there, and we're just not quite there. But it makes sense that everybody in the county sort of operates under the same guidelines. And certainly, when our township is fifty percent of our landmass and controlling that, we wouldn't want to be at odds with them. It would create an enforcement nightmare. So we are looking at those things to bring it all together and be, be cohesive legislation throughout the county. And all municipalities are cooperating with the effort as well as the county, so.
Back when we made, we spent quite a bit of time on this several years ago when we made some U D O changes. At that time, it wasn't the U D O, but our ordinances at that time for signage. And we spent a lot of time looking at campaign signs, real estate signs, signs of advertising events for nonprofits. So this will, this will change a lot of that. But I think if the whole county is consistent, I mean, certainly the real estate community is going to have issues with this. If the whole county is consistent, I mean, people are going to come to Hamilton County, and they're going to want to live in Hamilton County whether we allow signs or not. It could put Westfield at a slight disadvantage if we don't allow them and everybody else does. But I think if the whole county does the same thing, I think that definitely helps mitigate any issues for any, any given body, whether it's candidates, the real estate, the private organizations, whatever. But I mean, I've, I'm with Cindy. I've always hated to see signs. We have enough signs just to regulate our own speed limits and parking and various things like that. And so I, I think particularly if we can get the whole county to go in on this and be consistent, I think it's a good thing. But I'm certainly willing to hear from those who disagree. And we will, we've got a couple of weeks here to look at if there are issues with this as presented.
Can I ask one more question? What are the rules for these state roads? And are, I mean, are those different from county maintained?
I, indi prohibits signs in the right-of-way.
Yeah, from my recollection, last past elections, they would remove, I mean, they are not allowed.
Is perhaps a different issue, but that isn't something we control. But to follow up with Counselor Hoover, you know, the, this, this movement-
But to follow up with Councilor Hoover, you know, this movement really began with the four Hamilton County cities and the county commissioners agreeing that we need to have a unified ordinance across the entire county. So, everybody's playing on an even field, whether they're running for county office or a township office or a city office. This is the model ordinance that I know Carmel has, I believe, Fishers, and the county have adopted so far.
All right, well, we'll take a look at this and it'll be up for adoption consideration March twenty-sixth. Moving on to the last ordinance is ordinance eighteen dash zero eight, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment is introduced March twelfth. And we got the wrong date on here. Don't we, Brian?
Yeah, I guess so.
It's up for adoption. Has it been through APC?
No, sir, it's going to go down. This is just the initial.
Okay, all right.
It's in the wrong location, but- So, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment. This has to do with signage. And it has to do with changing our standards associated with signs to make them content neutral. It's just updating our ordinance to certain decisions that have been made by the appellate courts pursuant to some decisions made by the federal courts. So, it's part of our ongoing updating of our ordinances to make them compliant and make them in line with what else is going on in the county. Requested it just be sent down to the APC and run through the regular zoning processes. One other thing too, Joe, I found the ordinance was unanimously adopted. You and I can talk about it after the meeting if you like.
I'd like to. Okay, all right. Any further discussion on ordinance eighteen dash oh eight? All right, we have a couple miscellaneous items here at the end of our agenda, formal agenda. And that's the approval of food trucks for a grand opening. It's a one-time event. We made an exception under our ordinance for food trucks. And Kevin Todd is presenting this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of council again for the record. Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. We have a food truck ordinance, ordinance fourteen oh six, which permits vendors at certain events, including those that are approved by the city of Westfield. And we have a request this evening to be one of those approved events for a one-time event. Eye Beach Thirty-One, which is a new beach volleyball facility located at one seven three four one, Westfield Park Road, is having a grand opening event on April thirteenth and would like food trucks there from six to nine P.M. to celebrate their grand opening. Katie Connor with Eye Beach Thirty-One, I believe, is here this evening to introduce herself.
Hang in the back.
Come on up. And is available to answer any questions you may have about her event.
Hello, I'm Katie Connor and the owner of Eye Beach Thirty-One. And we are opening the beach volleyball venue on the southwest corner of thirty-one and thirty-two, leasing with the Indiana Soccer Academy. And we will have six outdoor beach volleyball courts. And we'll run leagues for leagues, camps, clinics for juniors and adults throughout the day and during the evening hours till ten P.M.
Well, Katie, welcome to our community.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. Anybody have any questions for Katie? I just asked for a voice vote to approve the use of food trucks for her grand opening one-time event. So, all those in favor of allowing food trucks at this event signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? There you go. We've got something to look forward to.
All right, and I know there's some high school students here. So, if you guys want to sign up for some intramural leagues, eyebeachthirtyone.com.
That's a shameless plug.
Are we going to have a grand, are we going to have a grand opening or something here pretty soon?
Yeah.
April thirteenth. And we're hoping you're going to be there for the ribbon cutting.
Of course, but will it be warm by then?
I think it will be warm enough. You can wear sweatpants.
Okay.
Thank you, Katie. All right, the last item is the twenty seventeen write-offs. Who has those? Matt, Brian?
I don't have them. They're attached to the agenda. But annually, again, we have certain write-offs. Most of them have to do with city bills that have gone out to people who have died or cannot be found. Generally, these are rather small. I think this year, they're incredibly small. I'm trying to open it as we speak.
All right.
And it's necessary so that the books can be balanced. The amounts are unrecoverable. We can't carry them as debts year after year. I think, here it is, comes up to one thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
All right. Council, have any questions? We go through this from time to time. Hearing none, I just asked for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving these for write-off, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same sign? Okay, write-offs approved. Thank you. At this time, residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda may do so at this time, so.
We've got one, Mr. President, Mike Johns would like to address the council.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mike Johns. I'm the president of the Bainbridge HOA Association. The Bainbridge HOA has asked that I address the city council tonight both to both formally and proactively express our position opposing commercial creep in our area. The entire city council, Mayor Cook, Mr. Zager, received either a letter or an email today, which included a petition from our neighborhood describing in detail what our concerns are with, and how they relate to the sale of the city-owned property that's located at fourteen thirty-eight East Hundred Fifty-first Street. After reviewing the published offering on the property, we believe that the language in the bid is kind of skewed and promoted offers to purchase by commercial enterprises. We are, we're hopeful that this was not the case or the intent and that the council will support our efforts to maintain our area as a residential and residential zoning. We believe that our concerns are based on some facts. And the facts is kind of we see them are that the property in question is currently and has been historically zoned residential and is described in the Village Farms plat. The city has put the property out to bid without a current appraisal that accurately describes the property being sold. The appraisal that is being used was done in March twenty seventeen and is based on a property of two point two two acres. The city is selling a property described as one point seven eight acres or essentially twenty percent below what the appraised value was based upon. The appraisal that is being used does not take into account the condition of the property, which frankly is deplorable. After discussions with several local real estate professionals, we believe that the value of the property, considering the property sold in the area over the last twelve months of similar size and acreage, the condition of the property and the location of the property, we believe that the price would be, value would be closer to two hundred and fifty thousand versus the five hundred and ten thousand minimum bid that's being asked. I've got, that is basically our position. I've got one final comment though. First of all, I want to thank Brian Zager for meeting me at the property last Friday and touring it with me. And I think that neither one of us was prepared for what we saw. As a citizen of Westfield, I certainly have the expectation that when the city purchases a property with the plan of reselling it at a later date, that someone would be responsible for maintaining that property. What we found was the house is essentially trashed. Cabinet doors were ripped off, the flooring is totally destroyed, broken bricks on the fireplace, glass throughout the house. Someone at some point had used the house as a paint gun warfare scene and it was swatting paint all over the walls, okay? So, essentially, the interior is destroyed. I never really expected to find the house in that condition and really, and frankly, I don't believe there's any excuse for that. As residents and taxpayers of Westfield, certainly, we bought the property with the expectation that it would be maintained and then resold after the road was finished. In my opinion, whoever's responsible for maintaining the property basically should be fired. And I would, I'd encourage the council members to take a look at the property and investigate what happened and how it happened and how an asset of the city wound up in the condition that it's in today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johns. Appreciate it. All right, any other? Is there any other guests that would like to address the council this time? All right, city council comments? Mr. Hoover? APC?
APC met last Monday evening. Many of the items that we addressed there, we've handled tonight as well. We sent a positive recommendation on the Oak Ridge Point PUD district amendment. We sent a positive recommendation on the Compton PUD district. We held public hearings on Spring Mill Trails for a overall development plan and secondary plat. Had a public hearing for Spring Mill Villas, formerly known as Maple Noel East. That's a property on the southeast corner of Spring Mill and thirty-two. And we also had a public hearing on the Hall and House PUD district amendment. And we had nobody speak at that, so we did go ahead and forward that with a favorable recommendation, which we acted on. We had, our consent agenda items consisted of the Grandstone Charlie's detailed development plan and Community First Bank detailed development plan, both approved pending zoning, the PUD amendment approvals. That was it.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any other council comments?
I have just one. And because we still have a few robotics people here, our middle school team on doing the VEX program did get an award this weekend at Lucas Oil, the Think Award, so proud of those. My kid's one of them, so I'm a little biased, but it looks really fun what you guys do and I'm hoping he gets involved. Yes.
Okay, any other council comments? Wait, Mr. Mayor?
Hey, thank you. Through our Department of Outreach and Events, the City of Westfield is joining a very interesting arrangement with the Kansas Development. We have something to say about it with their people and will be working on some volunteer efforts with people here in Westfield as we're aggressively looking for citizens and help and volunteerism with all of our tourism activities with the Colts coming this summer. So, that was, I don't know who came up with that idea. Was that you who came up with that?
Debbie Laird.
And Debbie Laird from Kansas, that was great. Thank you for doing that. Also, I heard a partner that, I just, I didn't realize this, the Danny Daughter Dance, and I think this is maybe the second year, was sold out in the first week. Three hundred guests. As part of that, I got to do with my three granddaughter's last year.
It was, thank you. That was, it was great. It was a lot of fun. Guess you can't get in though. So, now it's at April twenty-eighth and it's at Bridgewater this year. So, maybe you'll have some dropout because I imagine you'll take a waiting list? Smithers, very good. There already is one. Great. Grand Junction Derby, Saturday, May nineteenth, register online. Jeremy Lawler and his award-winning street and maintenance crews. They are nowhere near what's going on in Indianapolis, Jeremy. Thank you so very much. This weather and all, I think you're about, how much salt do you spread, Jeremy?
About twenty-five hundred tons.
Twenty-five hundred tons. Where, are we about done? Okay. There's so much salt out there, folks, you will not even have to salt your corn on the cob this summer. That's, it just seemed like it was every day for quite a while, but anyway. Grand Park, the event center is now hosting open gym sessions every night, open to the public, five dollars, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from three to five P.M. So, you can bring your own equipment and use the indoor facilities, which are just being used immensely all this, this winter. Huge planning, as I already mentioned, underway for the Colts Training Camp that'll be coming approximately the first two weeks of August, July, which is-
Into July.
Todd? Run for about three weeks. And the timing right now depends on the, on the draft, I believe. Is that part of it? So, it's, we don't have the exact dates. We're going to be undergoing a lot of events we've talked about. We need a lot of volunteers to pull this off. I had the opportunity to meet our new coach, Reich, last week, week before. Seemed to be a very wonderful man, was very complimentary on our city. Said he is looking forward to being here and he intends to pack the place. So, that'll be a lot of fun. The Indiana Fire Juniors back out of Grand Park had their huge classic this past weekend and will continue this coming weekend. So, there's a lot of soccer games going out there. I might mention, we had a huge non-sporting event last, I think it was Tuesday. Community Health Network had nearly one thousand of their employees on the center field for a team-building all-day session. And we fed a thousand people breakfast and lunch out there on what really took up just about a half of the, half of one of the fields out there at Grand Park. So, we continue to find new and interesting uses for that huge building, so. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our business this evening. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourned.
All right, motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye. Aye, as posed. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.